The next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, April the 12th, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. in the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. The consent agenda. Minutes of the Board of Supervisors. Regular meeting held Friday, February 22nd, 2019. Minutes of the Retirement Committee held Tuesday, February 12th, 2019. The Treasurers Report and Goff Financial from January 31st, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Neil.
Call the question.
Supervisor Siegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes.
Action Agenda. Resolution Number 2019-03/08-10. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award the Deer Run Greens Luke irrigation project designated RFP 19-03 to Mondragon Goff Incorporated for $172,500. A motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Discussion?
Yeah, it looks like Earl got held up, so he should be arriving any second, but I'll try and wing it in his absence. Yeah, Mondragon, we actually, we're kind of lucky. They're a very small company that has six or eight employees that does fill-in work for a bigger company, Toro here. And they actually had kind of an opening in their schedule, and that's when they found out about us and bid on the project. So they were, they're just trying to fill up a point in their schedule, and we're pretty lucky to get them. We've checked their references, and Tony was, Tony Altam, our consultant, was very pleased with them as well, so we're recommending them. And they can fit into our tight schedule, and on top of that, we're going to save about $120,000 off of the budgeted number. So the only, the only small change that we, that we would like to recommend would be an extra, since we're saving so much money, an extra $2,500 to step up with a little bit higher quality head. They're called Infinity Heads. They're, it's just the component, and 2,500 for, I mean, for that many heads, I mean, we're really only talking about 30 or 40 bucks per head, you know, but it's just the components of the head. They're just more heavy-duty, they're going to last longer, they're going to require less maintenance, so just for 2,500 more dollars, we can, above the fact of the one that we asked for, and that's just what we recommend.
So it'd be looking at 175,000?
172,500.
Oh, 172,500 includes that?
Includes that.
Tricking us again, aren't you?
Well, I thought it was on there, but there it is.
There we go.
It's done in the, it's done in the resolution, so I wanted to explain it, that's all.
Okay. Further discussion?
What's the schedule and what will be the impact on play?
There'll be absolutely no impact on play at all. So it's scheduled, it's scheduled on deer when we normally do, when we, when we normally do our closure on deer, so it, the line will be put in, I don't know, you've probably seen it happen now, it's just, it's just, it's just a slit cut, and they've just put the line in. There'll be a little bit of disruption putting in the heads, but when it's all said and done, it'll take them about two weeks to finish the entire job, so we really don't see any disruption at all. Not only, no disruption from the members or play, and we don't think there's going to be any disruptions in the financials either.
So is there a date when it's going to be finalized or finished?
Um, not quite yet. As soon as I get it approved, I'll, we'll get with, we'll get with Mondragon, and we'll get, we'll get some specific dates.
I just found, are we going to go by the dates that are in this, in this paper, paperwork that we got?
The summer schedule?
The schedule, it says mobilization staging to begin May 16th. Is that the schedule we're going to follow?
I, until, until we talk to Mondragon specifically, I mean, I, I need to make sure I know what their schedule is first, before I commit to something like that.
So, so we do the, we agree to this, and then we figure out when we're going to do it?
I would assume we won't be very far off that schedule.
No, it's going to be really close. I just need to-
Those are proposed dates. The dates that he's seeing there are the proposed dates, so as soon as we establish a contract, we'll have those, those dates.
Yeah, they're proposed, just not finalized.
So these dates are not, when we send information out like this requesting bids, and we ask for information, and we give them dates and everything, we just, then we have to adhere to it, or how's that work?
The, the contract that will end up going out will be based on, those are the bid specifications, if I understand correctly, so that's what's going to be in the, the contract will reference the bid specifications.
All right, so I assume we'll have an ending date, and then we're going to add on a penalty clause if they don't achieve that ending date?
Yes.
And that's to be determined, right?
Yes.
And that's to be determined by yourself?
Yes.
Further discussion?
My other question is, I'm not familiar with doing this. I'm assuming it's workable, since that's what they bid, but it seems odd to be combining rainbird and Toro equipment.
Well, we have, we have, we have quite a bit of Toro equipment in place, and I think it's just, I agree with that, I felt the same thing, too. It's, it's just workable, and it's just what makes it economically more feasible, that's all, because of the equipment in place.
Okay, and they're, they're guaranteeing that-
Yes.
I guess one more question. When we eventually do the irrigation system, this will be in place and we don't, we're good? No redos?
Yeah, this, yes, 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 for the greens themselves. You know, obviously unless we-
Well, I mean, the irrigation that we're putting around the green-
Yeah, unless we, unless, unless we decide, unless we decide to re, to change it for green, then obviously that has to get moved, but, but no, this is, the other irrigation that we talked about a while back was, was increasing the, the number of heads and the amount, the ability to water the rough, so the short answer really is no, you know, unless we decide to change a green or two. But this will, this will be in place and, and permanent, yes.
Public comment?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
Supervisor Siegel?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes.
Just in time, Earl. Oh, we're done. Hey, when you get yes, stop talking.
Yeah, right.
A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District requesting that the Board of County Commissioners, Highlands County, Florida, create new residential and use classifications and increase the minimum square footages and rezone portions of the district to protect land values. Motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Okay, so looking over, I think that this is, I say, I've started to get tunnel vision on this as well, we couldn't work on it so long, but I think this is, what's attached to the resolution is what we are planning to take to the county as a, as a request. Basically what we are doing is we're creating new land use regulations, a new classification system that will be specific to sun and lakes, and then once that classification system is created, we're requesting that the county change the actual zoning of certain areas of sun and lake to these new classifications, which will increase the minimum square footage, and then add a couple of things about garage space and temporary structures, a few other, you know, different items that we've discussed. It's just a request to the county, we have had discussions with them, and hopefully that's, you know, based on our discussions with Commissioner Hanley, you know, he's going to be fighting for us what there are for the commissioners. So, but when I was looking over the, the version that we had talked about back in January, and then the version that, that, we had further discussions after that, and there have been some changes made, but I'm not 100% certain that that's all changes that the board's on board with, so I want to check it over real quick, because the memo from back in 2005 had a 1,600 square foot on golf course, oh no, I'm sorry, 1,600 square feet on lots that are not adjacent to the golf course, minimum square footage, and a 2,000 minimum square footage on the golf course. That was for R1A zoning. And then the R2 zoning, the minimum square footages were 1,200 and 1,200, both on and off. And that didn't sound right to me, and I thought we had talked about 2,000 being too large, and so then I made the change on the one that's attached to the resolution. It is 1,600 square foot adjacent to the golf course, 1,200 square feet off golf course. That is for both R1 and R1A. That was the change that I made that's currently attached to the resolution. So that basically, any house that's going to be on the golf course, whether it's R1, R1A, R2, or R3, is going to have to have a minimum of 1,600 square feet living area. If you add a garage to that, you're looking at 2,000. Then off golf course, it's going to be 1,200 square feet, and if you're looking at a two-car garage, which is one of the new requirements that we're adding, is that all houses have to have a two-car garage. That brings that minimum 1,200 up to 1,600 on the roof, approximately. So I think that's where we left at last time, but if we want to discuss, I'm happy to discuss.
Well, I remember that Ron was here, and Ron thought that would pass, because we had, we had a few board members that were trying to make it even a little bigger, and he was kind of skeptic about it not passing the board, so that's my reaction of, of what it was, because he, he was pretty sure they would okay that.
Further discussion?
Did I get an answer to my question? My question was, I guess I asked Tanya, that on page three, where we list 1,000 square foot under I, where we did it last in 2018, we had it at 1,200, and somebody changed it to 1,000. So it's not exactly what we, we agree, I thought we had agreed upon this in January, and now we're finally getting around to executing it, but if that's the case, the numbers aren't the same.
Correct, and so that's what, what I had, what that, that on page three, which you're talking about, under I, that's minimum square footages for the R2 designation, the way it read back in January was it was going to be 1,200 square feet, whether it was adjacent, next to the golf course, or not next to the golf course. It was 1,200 square foot minimum. You see that? Or do you have-
Yeah, but that's not where I am. I'm under, isn't this where we are?
No, this is saying, same as R1.
All right, so you have, you, you're looking at just the current version, but that's what I'm, with the, the old version-
The old version said 1,200.
1,200 for on golf course and 1,200 for off golf course, and so I changed that in the R2, I changed that so that it would be the exact same size as R1, 1,600 and 1,200.
Well, it's not 1,200, it's 1,000. It says 1,000 on the new one.
On the resolution?
That's what I'm trying to say. Not very well, I'd be at.
That's for, no, that's for ground floor. If there's a multi-story-
I'm just saying it was different, it was 1,200 when we walked out in January, now it's all, it's been changed to 1,000, is out.
No, no, you're just looking at the, the 1,000 square, square foot part? That's if it's a, if it's a two-story building, the bottom floor has to be at least 1,000, but it still has to be 1,200 or 1,600.
I understand that, but last, when we walked out, it was 1,200 last time. I, I hear what you're saying, but if I look at this from January, it's 1,200.
Mm-hmm.
If I look at this from, this week, it's 1,000. They're different. I'm just asking, why are they different?
I, yeah, because I made it, it was, because it differed from the R1A, and so I made them both the same.
This is R2.
What did the R1A say in January? What did the R1A say in January? It's the R2.
If I'm understanding you correctly, it'd still have to be a minimum of 1,200, just 1,000 on the first floor, a minimum of 200 then on the second.
Correct.
But it could be more than that, that's just the minimum. That's, in essence, the multifamily is R2, right?
Correct.
So yeah, that's all I, basically what I was doing was making them consistent with
each other, so that we wouldn't have to worry about a, a house that's in an R2 zone having a different square foot requirement than in this R1A zone.
Mike, if you guys are okay with it, I mean, it's a change, so I'll-
My question is, if there are properties that don't adhere to these new codes, are they grandfathered, or do they need to upgrade?
No, no, there's no required upgrade, but if, like I say, if there's some sort of event that requires, it's just, it's just the same as when, when building code changes, you don't have to retrofit your house to upgrade it to new building codes, but if you do new construction on it, then you have to bring it up to the current standards. So if a house gets, you know, if a house gets destroyed in a hurricane, and they have to rebuild the house, they're going to have to rebuild it to the new square footages.
I think we had that discussion at the time.
I don't know if Neil was here that day.
I wasn't. And it's, it's incredibly unlikely, Mike, because there's, you can, you can take a house basically down to, almost to its, to its exterior walls, and it'll still be considered a remodel, so this would only be on what would be considered new construction.
Other questions? Public comment?
Gene Dan Jimmy, resident. Looking at the rezoning of this, I believe back in, I think it was 2014 or 2013 in that area, there, that the district had an agreement with Fifth Third Bank that made the building lots and the requirements similar to the requirements that are in Manor Hill. Is this going to override that agreement?
No, I think if, and maybe Tanya, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think all of the homeowners associations that we have in the, in the district right now are more restrictive than this, so they would actually, they, they have higher minimums than they, than we do. So no, it's, it's not overriding them, this is-
It won't override it?
Correct.
Okay, so all the, all the lots that we got from Fifth Third Bank and what they own are going to stay with the higher restrictions?
Correct, yeah, if they're, if they're deed restricted, that's, this is not going to affect those deed restrictions.
That is the Deer Run restriction on, there's about 360 lots that were, that applied to that agreement that you're speaking of. Actually, the Preserve has the same square footage amounts as we're proposing today, but that is the least restrictive of the homeowners associations as far as square footage. So what we're proposing today is not as restrictive as Deer Run.
I know there's a lot of effort put into secure those restrictions at the time.
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just to clarify it, make it a little easier for me anyways, so if you build a single-family home, it has, on the golf course, it has to be 1,600 square feet under air, correct?
If this passes.
If, if it passes, yes.
And if the Deer Run restriction is not on that particular lot, then this would apply. So there are, there are lots throughout Deer Run that have the Deer Run deed restrictions, which is 2,000 square feet on the golf course. So it depends on-
But there, there are just a few over in 16, though, correct? There's only a few of them, there's some.
I have a map, I don't have a map, but I think there's about 360 lots out of the 1,441 lots we're proposing today that have the Deer Run deed restriction.
And a duplex built on a lot on the golf course has to be what?
A multifamily would technically have to be, if it's on the golf course, I think that would be 2,200, because you have to have a 1,600 minimum for a single family, and then a, any accessory structure or multifamily use structure would be an additional 600 square feet, so 2,200. But still, the, the minimum square footage is going to be 1,600.
The, the two together, you mean, or each one?
No, if there's, it would be a total of 22, if it's going to be-
Two, there's going to be two units.
If there, yeah, then you would have to have a total of 2,200 square feet. You could have a single, you could have one unit with 1,600 square feet, and then the second unit would be, have to be at least 600 square feet. So no one's going to build a duplex like that, so that, if there's, if there's two structures, it has to be a total 2,200.
So if they were identical, and a lot of them are, and they, they would be 1,100 square feet each?
Connect, so a 2,200 square foot structure plus the garages.
That's a minimum.
That's the minimum.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any, will there be any grandfathered lots which are presently owned that were purchased under the previous minimum square footage that will now be restricted to going to a larger square footage if they decide to build?
Yeah, if there's, if there's, as far, I'm not aware of anything being grandfathered, only existing structures, so unless, the only thing that I could think of or that may change is if there's a, an existing building permit.
So in other words, if somebody bought, owns property on, in, in that area, in Unit 16, that purchased it when there were, it was a less restrictive covenant or a less restrictive ordinance with regard to the size of the house, the county and the district have the power to increase the minimum requirements and put that added burden on the current property owner.
Correct.
Would that be subject to challenge by a current owner?
Anything's subject to challenge, but we, yeah, we discussed that with the county.
Yeah. Everything's legal until the court decides otherwise, is that correct? Thank you.
Bill Norcross, resident. I'm glad somebody's addressing this problem, I mean, this problem was addressed way back with Kurt McCullough, when he was on the board, and he was afraid of those mini houses being inundated in, in the back of Unit 16. Anyhow, the house that's close to our heart is the one on Columbus in Woods and Ice. Now, I've asked about the size of the house, and I thought I read it was 1,200 square feet. It is tiny, and it looks really out of place, and I shouldn't say anything about a yellow shirt, but it does, it's painted with a very bright yellow color, and it really, it's, I don't know about the people who live next door, but they have to be really upset. I mean, they have this little teeny house there, so the question is, what was the size of that house built? Was it 1,200 square feet? It's off the golf course property, so, I mean-
So that, that house is 1,600 total square feet, that includes the garage, but it does meet the minimum 1,000 current square foot requirement by the county? So there's no Deer Run HOA restriction there, it's just a normal county governed lot?
Right, I understand that.
So it meets the 1,000, it's 1,600 total?
Yeah, I, I just think it's out of place, and I'm glad everybody's considering upping the minimum size. I appreciate that, thank you.
So I do, Omar, if we, if somebody was to build a house on that lot, once this is approved, what would the minimum size be?
1,200 living, and then they'd have to have a two-car garage, which is, let's say, 500 additional square feet, so it'd be 1,700 total. So it still wouldn't be far off, this one's 1,600 because of the patio and some other things, but basically you're only going up 200 square feet living on that house, would be the difference. So, right, that's what I'm saying, so living is currently 1,000, it's going to be 1,200 after this is, if this is passed.
And a two-car garage, that's a one, I believe.
Correct.
Further comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
Supervisor Siegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes.
A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District adopting civil citations for violations of Section 9-102 Highlands County Code of Ordinances. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Good morning, supervisors. Attached for your consideration are civil citation dollar amounts for the 12 minimum maintenance violations that are listed in the Highlands County Code of Ordinances, Section 9-102. We did have a code enforcement workshop on January 11th to talk through some of the issues we have with our code enforcement, and the, the maximum penalties are already defined for us in our code. This gives us more clarity on what we would do in a first and second offense with a minimum number of days. So there's your, there's your list there. There's seven, and then as you scroll down, the remaining five. Do y'all have any questions about what we proposed or the number of days? I have Bob here, if we, if we have any specifics.
Basically, it's all going to be up to the discretion of Bob, right?
Correct.
So the number of days, I mean, this whole thing is, if he wants to give, I mean, if he feels it's a violation, he's going to apply this to that, but if he doesn't think it's a serious violation, he's going to just, we're not going to do anything, correct?
Well, the process, we have two processes. I mean, a normal warning notice is usually what we have done typically. You want to explain about the notice of violation?
Good morning. I'm Bob Brumfield, Sun and Lake Code Enforcement Officer. Our process, and we address every, every violation that we see. Sometimes it's, it's settled with just a verbal warning, we, if the people aren't aware of a, of a issue or a violation that they're committing, we can, we knock on the door and tell them about it. If that doesn't work, and, and many times, we just go ahead and send out a warning notice, which is a little step, it's a different step than the county does. In most cases, the warning notice will resolve the issue. There are a small number of residents that you have to take them down to the wire, they, we issue, then we issue a notice of violation, which gives them a set deadline, and we go by this as well, for the amount of days, and we also, at that time, if we have a hearing scheduled, we send them a notice of hearing, and I'd say, nine out of 10 times, they'll comply once they get the notice of hearing, because then they know it's going to be a serious issue. And after that deadline, the date that's on the notice of violation, once that date comes, we can start filing. We can issue a citation, we can start the filing, and then once it goes to the special magistrate, and he issues an order, a special magistrate order, we take that to the clerk of courts, get it recorded, and it becomes a lien against the property. So we, we, and we address every issue that we see. It's just sometimes it's a verbal warning or notice, a warning notice or the notice of violation if, you know, if they don't comply with the other means. But it- But it does get done. The difference between a civil citation and a, a notice of violation, there's a little bit different. The citation just fines and there's a, there's a cap on it. When we do the notice of violation, then that gives us the ability to abate the, the violation. We can clean it up. If it's high grass and weed, we can clean it up. If it's trash, whatever, we can, we can take care of it, swimming pools, but we have to take it to the special magistrate either way. The, the difference with a civil citation, if they don't comply by the, by the date that we've given them, the deadline date, we can issue a site, a fine right away, but it still has to go to the special magistrate before it's, it can get recorded in the clerk of courts and become a lien.
And we did use that process this week on a property owner.
Yes. We, we had a, a property on Matanzas and we sent him a notice of violation, a notice of hearing. He did receive the letters and we, Mike and I met with him on his property and further explained to him what he had to do and he's in compliance now. He cleaned his property, took all the concrete off, cleaned up the trash, got a dumpster, mowed, mowed the grass, so he's in compliance now. That's, that's what the process is.
You're, you're, you run about a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety violations a month, don't you? Somewhere around there?
It varies a little bit, but yeah, I'd say somewhere in that.
So you're going to notify a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety people of violations and follow up with them based on the number of days on this piece of paper?
Yes.
You can, you can do that?
Most of the time they comply once they get the notice of, the warning notice.
Right, I understand that, but somebody's got to go check it out.
Yes, yes, we do. We follow up on everything.
And then if they don't, let's say they don't do it, you're going to, then you send them notification that they got to do it, otherwise we're going to fine them or...
Yes, that's correct.
And then if they don't do it again, then you fine them?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's about a three-week period?
Uh, it can be that long.
Okay.
On the, on the violation, yes, it could be. The county, it's, it's much faster than what the county can do it in.
And when they, and when you find them, they have how long to pay that?
Uh, see, that's another problem. They don't have to pay it back.
No.
It becomes a lien against the property and until their property changes hands, they're, they don't have to pay it.
So when you find them, it's, that's, that's like putting a lien, you're putting a lien on, on the property?
That's correct.
Okay. So they may never fix it.
And, and code enforcement liens disappear after twenty years. So if the person lives in a house, if it's a non-homesteaded property, you can't collect on a homesteaded property, you can't collect the fine on a homesteaded property. But if they have multiple properties and they're not living in one of them, then you have a lien against that property. If they don't do anything, if they don't sell the property, they, the fine disappears in twenty years. But it also restricts other properties that they own. So if they have multiple properties, they have to, to take care of that lien before they can do anything with their other properties.
I've got one last question for you. Is this going to make things better or are we just kidding ourselves?
Uh, it, what this is, it, it'll give everybody a, a set time. We go by this pretty much anyway, but this will make it an official, it'll, it'll make it official.
You think it'll work?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we can stick with it.
Sure.
Further discussion?
Yeah, just a couple of clarifications. On the Exhibit A, it shows first offense and second offense and the rules reference repeat offense as opposed to second offense. So when we say second offense, do we really mean repeat offense?
Correct.
And it could be three, four, five times.
Correct.
And it would be the higher one for each repeat. And I know we talked at the workshop and I wasn't clear, but according to this, the repeat violation is anytime within five years.
Correct.
So any, any offense within that five years after the first one is a repeat offense and subject to the higher.
It has to go through the, the special magistrate process or they have to admit guilt before they're considered a repeat offender or a repeat violation.
Further questions? Thanks, Bob. Public comment?
Supervisor Hotelling?
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Branson?
Yes.
Add-on items? Petitions and communications?
None.
Staff reports?
Good morning again. February's in the books. Pretty good February. We were very, very busy. We ended up really about eight thousand dollars above on green fee revenue and another eight thousand dollars over previous year in banquet. On merchandise sales, it's a little bit lower. We had some timing issues with how we, with how kind of Andy has done some of his demo days. So even though we're down a little bit, that's, that's really going to be made up, I think, this month. So, but really of our eighty-three thousand dollars that we're, that we're ahead right now from last year, we're going to add to that lead a little bit. So that's good news. Been very busy. We're right in the middle of kind of a real busy stretch with, with the, with the Patty Day event. Right, right now, there's Chin Dental out on the golf course right now, a full field shotgun charity event. Tomorrow night is the, is the New Sun Awards Dinner tomorrow night, so we have two hundred and eighty people in the, in the banquet room tomorrow night. And then Sunday night is Cuss the Pin Setter, another two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty people on Sunday night. So we're just right in the middle of a stretch of being very, very busy. Pacing right now in March is, is, is up again, five, six, seven percent up from, from last year. So, so it, right now, it looks good. The, the amount of things that we have booked, which is mostly almost all member events because of all the, the ladies and men's club championships and the member guest that's coming up, they're growing a little bit, so pacing is actually up. So banquets are going to be up six or eight thousand dollars on top of that. So, so we're going to have another, barring some really crummy weather, but we're going to have a really good March and add more to our lead.
Want to talk about brunch?
Oh, brunch? Um, sure. Brunch, we really haven't, mostly just the time of year we rolled it out, we've been, we really haven't done much to try and advertise it other than to really the membership, but just by word of mouth and the membership, we're doing about eleven hundred, twelve hundred dollars per, per Sunday more. It's, and it has to do with being able to sell more alcohol on the golf course too and, and being open for, for brunch. So most of them, most of those extra monies are, are brunch. So really, as soon as we kind of get through this kind of busy stretch, the plans are to start marketing quite a bit harder to the residents and even to kind of the north part of Sebring. And we see that as an opportunity for, you know, really a place for some revenue growth where a lot of places we don't have that and we can do it on Sundays. But right now, if you, if you figure it up, you know, eleven, twelve hundred dollars per Sunday, you know, you multiply that out, out on a yearly basis, it's, it's five, six, seven percent more on an annual basis of sale, so it's significant. So it's, it's all really good news about brunch. So, and we're, it's not perfect yet, but the, the food is good, but we're still, but we're close. It's getting, it's getting better all the time and we're, we're just about there.
I got, I'd like to visit the kitchen for a moment. My favorite subject. Have we signed the, have we signed the contract yet?
No.
No, okay. So we're working on the contract?
Yes.
And I assume we're going to put ending dates somewhere around September thirtieth? Is that what your goal is or...
The, the next step is Marmor actually bringing us a, a construction schedule, so...
I know, but what are we trying to tell them we want?
That's exactly what we're trying to tell them, right?
September thirtieth?
Well, the, the first event that we have booked, I'd have to look, it's October, it's October twelfth. That's the first event that has to be done. So, so September thirtieth is the number that I gave him.
All right, so when the contract's signed, we're going to see the dates that'll be in it and we'll see the penalties if they run late?
Yes, you will.
Okay. And then one other question, have you decided what's going to happen with your employees?
We're going to do everything we can to keep them employed. I mean, right now, I mean, we're, we're, I mean, we're going to be serving food without much, without much interruption right now. I mean, we're going to, we're going to continue, we're going to continue cooking, we're going to continue service. I mean, we always have a slowdown that time of year anyway and especially when we get to, you know, right after Memorial Day and really all summer long, it slows down a bunch and just the normal course of business, we, we cut hours and, and, and that, I don't see that really changing very much, but...
I thought the kitchen had to be closed for...
There may be some days that were going to be closed, but there, but, but, but there's, there's, ninety-five percent of the time, there's, there's not going to be, we're going to have something open and some kind of food service available. We will.
So you, if they're working in the kitchen, you can't cook in there, can you?
No, we're, we're creating a, we're creating an outdoor kitchen.
I'm sorry?
We're creating an outdoor kitchen.
You're creating an outdoor kitchen?
I thought I was clear about that before.
Ah, where's the outdoor kitchen going to be?
Where the outdoors.
This is exciting news. Where, where's it, where's it, we creating?
It'll probably be on the outside where the, on the, on the west side of the banquet room is where we'll put the tent.
So it's, we're going to do a temporary tent? What are we doing? Temporary tent. Hope it doesn't rain in the summer.
It will.
All right. I, I look forward to seeing this. Is this going to be an, an expense?
Yes. We've talked, I thought we've talked about this before.
I'm sorry, temporary kitchen?
We did.
Part of the budget, yeah. I don't, did you hear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We talked about it. Go for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Every time we talk about the kitchen.
I do have a question for you, Mike, because there's a, I guess it looks like a swamp to me that the, the county owns most of those lots along Matanzas and there's some drainage that goes into there. Are we creating part of that problem with the drainage off the golf course and the, and I don't know that we're clear and that's what I'm asking.
On whole...
Fourteen?
Fourteen, yeah. We've cleaned the side of that and, and we plan on going back in to clean some more up there. It is a drainage area and we have addressed in Backgill's house, it's, I, I think it's Jim Barnhart's area where he lives and we've done some work there already, but we plan to go back in and clean some more up, yes.
So I know I see water going through there.
Yeah.
And I saw that those lots were owned by the county and they were part of the bid. I don't think they got anything for them because, I don't know what, how much you'd have to dig out of there to use them, but it looks to me like we're putting water on it.
Well, and there's, there's those, the trees, the berry trees, whatever they're, they're called down here, we do have to, uh, uh, take some of those out too.
The reason I ask about this...
Bazillion peppers.
There's, yeah, there's peppers in there, but...
Yeah.
The reason I ask about it, they're clearing lots back in there and I just want to make sure we were not causing a problem.
No, no, it's not us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike, between Matanzas and Granada, are we going to do anything soon to clear our easement in there and get that cleaned before they start, because there's lots there now and it seems like it'd be better for us, I don't know if we can do this, but to get that, our easement cleared out of there.
Are you talking down the end of that street?
All the way down, from when we put the new, all the way down where they're, they're starting to build.
Well, you plan on going in there and do a lot of handwork and just clean it up to get it moving better, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that is our easement.
Right, exactly.
And there's lots of, they cleared out around me lots already.
Right.
So...
Yes, we do plan on going in and, and doing some handwork in there, yes.
There's water standing.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Other reports?
All I've got is the, the big foreclosure, Unit Twelve foreclosure is essentially done. I fully expect to go, I've made some minor revisions to it yesterday afternoon. I fully expect to go into the office after this meeting and sign it and have it prepared to file. I think the only other thing left to do is to prepare summons for the, the mortgage holders, but I fully expect it to be filed by the end of the day. So that'll be, once we get service, it'll be moving along.
Let me, let me ask him a question. How we come with Tanglewood? I want to ask this at every meeting until I get a good answer.
Next meeting. Yeah, we're going to have a, we're going to bring it to the, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
I'm sorry, you're going to, I didn't hear?
The, the revised, the amended contract, you know, the contract amendment will be on the agenda for the next meeting.
So you, you talked to them and...
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, nice to know.
General managers report?
Good morning. Yesterday, the recreational parks and advisory committee met. We proposed a, a project to the, the RPAC committee for the bocce ball and the shuffleboard for a total of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, including contingency. Our funding request from the county was seventy-five percent of that amount at a hundred and seventy-one thousand. RPAC, their fund balance is only ninety-six thousand dollars as of yesterday at the time of our proposal. So I withdrew the request. I've talked to Drew, Ariel, we're going to, we're going to discuss this and I'm going to bring back another request in May to their meeting and I will present to you what, what we've come up with as an idea. So there's just not enough funding. The county did not fund any monies into RPAC this year and they used all of, all of the normal funding for their capital projects and to balance their capital. So it's very unfortunate and I think the monies from, that are going to be given to this committee is going to decrease as we move forward in the future and the county's going to put more on the local governments to fund their own recreation and look for dollars elsewhere. So, so that's where we are and I'll present to you, one of, one of the two meetings in April, I'll have some, some ideas of what to do there.
I don't know if it means anything of what I think, but I would, I would like to, if the funding doesn't come, I'd like to start on that somewhere, somewhat, because I think we need that, the shuffleboard and that to get it going. So I'd be in favor of getting it going in next year's budget. So, just so you know that, and I don't know if you've talked to the others, but I would like something done with those two items.
Okay, thank you. World Design Marketing was here on Tuesday. We, we met here in the community center. Ariel did a great job reaching out to local residents and to our business leaders and there were two focus groups during, during the discussions. And basically, there, there was no right or wrong answers to the, to the residents. He, you know, asked, what is your story? And it was nice to listen. Supervisor Hotelling was there with us and Ariel just to listen to the, to community and to the local leaders. They are going to be creating a, a work plan document with the notes from that meeting with, with other information here in a couple of weeks. So we should have that document. I'll be presenting that to you as well. Do you want to make any more comments from that meeting?
Yeah, I think there were a lot of good comments made. I, as I got away from it and started thinking about it, I'm not sure that we got what we should have gotten from another group because the, the two groups that gave us a lot of good information were community leaders and residents, but all of the residents were club members. So we didn't really hear from any residents that weren't club members and, and maybe we should reach out to that. Arguably, the, the voices of the club members are the ones that are going to be the most useful in marketing, but we might have heard something from non-club members that we didn't get.
I would agree. I should have a project update for you in a couple of weeks. We have a lot of things going here. We're, we're wrapping up the season. I know we don't have a board meeting, another board meeting this month, so I will send you some updates by email. Thank you.
Questions for Tanya? Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment?
Long record, I live in Granada. I just wanted to say thank you to the committee and anybody else that was involved in that speed bump you put in because speeding has decreased incredibly from the second day it was in there. I've noticed a, a big difference. So I just want to give you the shout out and say thank you very much.
I have several questions. I was quite concerned to receive that postcard regarding our water problem that we've had. I was quite concerned to receive that postcard regarding our water problem that we've had. First of all, is the source of our, what is the source of the SNR water supply?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
What is the source? Where do we get our, what is the source that we receive the water from? Is it wells, is it?
It's a well.
It's a well underground.
Okay. And there was nothing on that postcard that indicated any safeguards were put in place to prevent this happening in the future. Has anything been put in place?
Yes, we've reviewed our internal procedures so this doesn't happen again. The issue was an annual test that did not happen. It was a nitrate, nitrite test. We will be testing for these contaminants two times in 2019. We've already done it once in January. So the postcard that you received was unfortunately a standard wording that was required by DEP, and so we have put safeguards in place so it doesn't happen again.
What was the timing that took place from the discovery of the omission and the testing that was done that was supposed to have been done?
One day.
One day?
Yes, ma'am.
Were there any fines associated with this?
No.
No. Thank you.
I have a question. I assume that if this, after the foreclosure goes through on the properties in Unit 12, that the district will be paying county taxes on those lots while they're held by the district?
If the, if the district recovers the property, I mean, it's very possible, it'll go to foreclosure sale like any other, that's the process. It'll be sold at the courthouse. The district will have a foreclosure plaintiff's bid and be able to recover the property, but if there are interested developers, they can show up and bid as well.
Okay, but if the district does win the properties through the foreclosure, the district will then become liable for the county taxes on those lots.
Correct.
Those lots, 1,500 lots represents a 40% increase in the sewage that the district will be responsible for, and that'll have to be in place prior to any building going on, on those 1,500 lots. The district is currently paying county assessments on almost 200 lots in Unit 6, which is to the west of Unit 5, with the purpose of building a new sewage treatment plant out there. The building of a new sewage treatment plant will take minimum of five years from the time of initiating of design and getting permits and picking up the scattered privately-owned lots that are within that area where those 200 vacant lots are. The district has, for the past six, eight years, has paid over $50,000 in county taxes on those lots for the purpose of building a new sewage treatment plan out there. The, again, the 1,500 lots that we're about to foreclose on represent a 40% increase in the amount of sewage that we'll be responsible for treating, and we don't have near the capacity for that. There are no roads in that 1,500 lot area. There's no improvements at all. We're looking at, as we've learned over the past 10 years, we're looking at probably well over $10,000 per lot of infrastructure costs associated with the development of those 1,500 lots. I question the wisdom of foreclosing on those 1,500 lots without any kind of plan in place or not even any discussion about the sewage treatment problems that we're facing within the five-year plan that we've been manipulating over the past few months. Say one other thing about the one meeting in the month of March. A few years ago, that one March meeting was interfering with the member-member tournament, golf tournament, and for that reason, it was set aside. We changed to only one meeting in March. Evidently, that became a permanent change. I don't recall that it was discussed as such. It was a temporary change at the time it was done. Thank you.
Let me address this to Mike Hurley. I understand you're a very busy guy cleaning up lots, doing road work and everything else. I understand that. But just recently, Tuesday, I came back from a play at the college, and I don't normally go the north entrance to Southern Lake, but I can tell you one right now, it's pretty enlightening. At that time, it was trash all over the place, bottles, cans, whatever, whatever. And during the daytime, of course, I go there probably at night, which I don't see all this, but during the daytime, you can really see it. And I'd really appreciate if you could have a crew clean up and take a look at that once in a while if you haven't already done it.
We send the crew up daily to pick up trash. Trash is a big problem. People drive down roads. Billy, you know it yourself, they just throw McDonald's and they throw whatever. We have two guys who go up at least one day a week, and that's a tough area because it's well trashed. We pick up a lot of trash, we pick up tires, we pick up mattresses, we pick up, you know, I think we picked up a stove one day, just a dozen areas. People drive through there, but we do address it. We only have so many people, you know, do certain jobs, so, you know, we, I mean, I want to say something. I took a ride two days ago across the street where somebody told me to go there and to look at how bad that area is compared to ours. And I'll tell you right now, we're not perfect, but we're not as bad as people. You know, if you cross 27th and go in that area and right up and down those roads, you know, I mean, we do the best we can. We have some weak staff, you know, Gammie tries to keep the path, you know, the labor down, and, you know, we do the best we can. And we used to have cleanup days here, and we haven't had any in a few years, and I think because we actually caught up, we're doing pretty good with the cleanup days for days, you know, so, I mean, and, you know. But we also need volunteers. You know, on a Saturday, we, you know, we school out people to go out and help. You know, we have schools and stuff to do the same thing, you know, to do a volunteer day, you know, and that stuff helps, too. But the whole community has to pitch in, you know, and they do. I mean, we have a doctor that walks around here every week and picks up trash. You know, I mean, I agree with you, Bill. There are a lot of areas you drive to meet patients, and I go down and see a bag of McDonald's fries all over the road, you know, but, you know, we're doing the best we can.
It just seemed it was very obvious during the daytime, and that entrance is an entrance to Southern Lake, and the first impression that you get is not very good. If you need volunteers, put me on as a volunteer to help in that endeavor if you want to, and I appreciate the cleanup. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's an adopt-a-highway program that maybe we could participate in. You get a lot of volunteers, I would think.
I mean, that's a tough area. There's, I mean, these dumb animals, that area.
The difference in that, though, is that somebody's responsible for a specific street to keep it clean, and that typically happens.
That's a good idea. You know, I know, that's a good idea. Thanks.
Any other comments? Discussion to and from board?
I'll go ahead and start. I brought along some books on the suggestion of Tanya that you guys might like to see some of the books I've written on Pebble Beach, so these are, that's my collection of writing. And I've also had soft conversations with Ariel with the US Open, being at Pebble Beach this year. I could do a presentation on the history of Pebble Beach prior to the US Open to the community, either at maybe one of the Monday morning community events, or maybe a dinner at the restaurant or whatever. If there's interest in that, I'd be happy to give a presentation on the history of Pebble Beach, which is a pretty special place.
I'll give you a free plug. That's an excellent book, and I learned a lot by reading it. I had no idea the cavalry is responsible for the greenness of the place. And if you haven't read the book, you'll figure out what I'm talking about. Anybody else? Got anything going on? I know, Tanya, that you met with the county about speeding. Do we have any further thoughts? What do we need to do? What are their suggestions put down there? Or do they have any?
They are, they've told me they're going to do some more patrolling here. You know, we voiced our concerns. That's number one. That's what they're going to do. But they cannot be there all the time. We know that. They talked to us about flashing speed signs. They've also, as a third option, request to the county to install speed sensors, so it counts not only the number of cars, but the speed of each car. If we are interested in doing that, we need to prioritize which road we want to look at first. You know, I say Southern Lake Boulevard because that's a county-owned road. That will give us data. So data will help us make decisions on our speed. They've also mentioned our speed signs in certain areas may not be what they should. That's another issue. So the county also had a suggestion about reaching out and looking at a possible traffic study as an option to help us with certain areas. We wouldn't have a study for the entire district, so we have options in front of us, and we're going to be looking into those options here in the next few weeks.
Would those studies be our expense or county?
They would be our expense, because it would be an outside third party. So I have a name of a engineering firm out of Lakeland just to talk about, you know, what services they perform for other governments, what, you know, just a little bit about what it would entail and if it would benefit us.
And for the record, I actually saw a patrol car in my neighborhood for the first time in four years.
Maybe I have a guilty conscience, but I see them a lot coming down our street. I do, I think that's very important, though, Tanya, that we're not just ignoring the situation, but you're sitting here with virtually no information, because we don't know how fast people are going. You can say, "Well, it looks like they're doing 50." Well, the bus comes by my house. I doubt seriously the school buses can do 50, but they sure look like it. So I think we need to have more information before we get too far into this process. Other discussion? We are adjourned.